Now being recorded. Councilman Jones, do you mind doing the implication, please? You're on mute.
I put myself on mute. All right, thank you. Our eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for this day. We bless you and we praise you and we thank you, Lord. We thank you for this city that you've created. We thank you for its leadership. We thank you for its citizens. We thank you for its vendors and the employees, Lord, that help us to run effect, to work effectively in the city. Now, Father, as we come together to do the business of this city, we ask that your guidance, your wisdom, your understanding would be prevalent. Let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, oh, Lord, our strength and Redeemer. We praise you and thank you. It is in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gilliam.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harry.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
President Curtis.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That is seven in attendance. We're all here. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved first by Councilwoman Fareed, second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gillian. Discussion? Okay. Madam. Clerk, could you do a roll call to accept the agenda, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillian?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harry?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you. President Curtis?
Yes.
All right. That is seven.
The agenda has been adopted. Citizens, first up on the agenda is the presentation on traffic calming measures. Councilwoman Fareed, do you want to do the introduction on that?
Yes, I would. So I see Ms. Nikki Greco is on the line. She just went off camera, so I don't know if she lost her connection. Hi. Well, you're on mute.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hi. Thank you so much for joining us. Is there, I can't see of all the attendees, is there anyone else from Ms. Ivy, from Councilwoman Ivy's office who's, who will be joining us? I don't.
Maybe not at the moment, but you may see more of the members and, and the council member herself. But there has, there is a definite full agenda on our calendars.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones, can you just check, is there anybody in the waiting room?
She said there's no one.
There's no one in the waiting room.
Okay. So, um, I'll go ahead and just give the introduction. Um, so we have the Councilwoman Jolene Ivy's office here to speak to us about traffic safety calming measures. The county has an initiative called Vision Zero, and there are some other specific traffic safety measuring options that they will be speaking to us about. This will be a great opportunity to kind of hear what's going on in the county, get some clarification in terms of what can be done and whose responsibility is the city versus the county, and also an opportunity for the citizens to ask questions on that. And there's still nobody in the waiting room. Ms. Greco, are you able to check in and see where everyone is?
On an ID right now.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I don't know if we want to, Council President, in the meantime, just go on ahead with the next agenda item until Councilwoman Ivy is able to join us?
Sure. So let's move on to, we only have one topic of discussion, and that was the topic of trunk or treat. And just given the citizens an awareness of when that will take place and where it will take place. Acting Chief Jackson, is there any information? I know that typically the, the police department handles that. I've heard that it's on October the 30th, but could you give some clarity on that event, please?
Well, I'm still waiting here from Sergeant Richardson. He's not here today.
Okay.
Trying to coordinate and plan something for the police department to do a community outreach to the citizens. And we've been contacted by Prince George's County Police Department, and they wanted to invite us to join in with them. But I told them that Sergeant Richardson was working on something, and that he would, I would get back with them as soon as I communicate with Sergeant Richardson.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other comments by the council members?
No. Well, yes, Council President, Sergeant Richardson did reach out to me about the trunk retreat. So I have reached out to the county to try and secure the parking lot at the Woodmore Town Center Park, which is a county park. And he also asked me to check for the clubhouse parking lot at the Woodmore Town Center, which I did reach out to the Board of Directors for that. My question would be about the use of the municipal parking lot, because really, for trunk retreat, you need a lot. So I, I mean, Sergeant Richardson is not here on the phone. I don't know whether or not he already requested to use a municipal lot, and it just was not available, or, you know, what happened, but that's where I've been trying to assist him with finding a location with the event.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mayor Cross?
Hi, thank you so much.
My hand was up?
I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry. I didn't see you. Councilwoman Gillian. Mayor Cross, I'll come back to you. Councilwoman Gillian.
Yes, I just had a quick question for Sergeant Jack. I'm sorry, Acting Chief Jackson. Are we stuck, and I have no preference, I was just, I'm just a clarification question. Are we stuck on Saturday, the 30th, because I know there are some activities also happening that day? Or can it be, or have we given consideration to the 31st, meaning that's, that's Sunday? Again, no preference, just asking.
Well, I think coordination is, is one of the concerns that he has. I know he's making plans with a few people, but, you know, depending on what someone, what someone may have going on today, the next day or the day before. Coordination and planning right now is what he's trying to work out to make sure it's not, not causing a problem for anybody or inconvenience, you know? Because people do have things planned for Sunday and stuff like that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
My apologies, Mayor Cross. I got to you a little bit too early, but now you had your hand up.
It's all right. Thank you, Council President. Just so the citizens are aware that we do have a budgeted event that has already money allocated, and it's the Harvest Day Rewind. It is the city's alternative to Halloween. In fact, it's going to be November the 6th, which is going to be at the Municipal Center. So we do invite the council to consider that. That is something that we've already budgeted for our children. It is an opportunity for them to, again, wear their costumes and come out to welcome fall, in fact. And we will have our hayride and opportunities there for them, but it will, it will be a fun opportunity. And we're looking at partnering, if you will, across the administration to bring in drug and suicide awareness as the October is a Bruce of month as well. So we will bring forward that, breast cancer awareness. We can do all types of campaigns. But we are asking that the council will consider that we have already a budgeted event for November the 6th, which is for our children to serve as that purpose. And that's at the Municipal Center.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, this is not a council event. It's actually an event that the Glen Arden PD is looking to host. I believe they do something similar to this annually. So that is generally in addition to the Harvest Day event. So this wouldn't be a conflict with Harvest Day. And I believe, you know, as Acting Chief Jackson said, that this would potentially be in conjunction with the County Police Department as well. I'm only assisting from the standpoint of trying to help find a location. Obviously, the municipal building parking lot would be an ideal space. We don't need to get permission to use that. So I don't know why that's not being considered, but as I said, I did reach out to the county. I did reach out to the county for both dates, the 30th and the 31st. And I did reach out to the Board of Directors for the Woodmore Town Center community.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this topic?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I still haven't heard why it can't be in a, in a city parking lot. I mean, there's nothing being held on either one of those days in a parking lot.
I, I agree with Councilwoman Harry. I, I don't.
So.
The, the, you know, Sergeant Richardson would have to answer that when, when I was contacted to assist, it was, the request was specifically for the parking lot over here.
Okay. Mayor Cross, any, anything preventing us from having the trunk or treat on October the 30th or the 31st in the parking lot?
So the only thing is that you already have an event that is being paid for by the city and the citizens' dollars. So that is a competing event. So you can combine both events and have an amazing event versus having two half events.
So just one point, the, when Sergeant Richardson reached out to me, he asked for a time of 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. The shred event is over by 2:00. So it just wouldn't conflict with that either. We also have a nap that morning from 8:00 to 11:00 is the Going Green with Pride Day, then 11:00 to 2:00 is the shred day. And that's really not an event in the sense that you would be there from 11:00 to 2:00. That's you bringing your items to either drop off or donation, or your papers to shred. We will just be there until 2:00. So 4:30 to 6:00 is not a time to conflict with any activity that we're doing that day.
Hello, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Councilwoman Jolene Ivy. I've had a terrible time trying to get in, mostly due to Wi-Fi issues. But since I couldn't get it to work, I called in, so I'm going to go on mute until you're ready for me. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Harry, I heard you before.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I mean, I don't see where the conflict comes in that. I mean, if I was a kid, I would let it get, have two days where I can get canned. You know, so I don't see the conflict. I think they would enjoy both events immensely, so.
Okay. All right. So, Councilwoman Jones?
And, I'm sorry, and the police department, they have their own budget for events, for community events. So I don't see this as being, you know, out of anything that we haven't done in the past. As far as if the, I mean, which, what date have they pinned down? They haven't pinned down a date yet. Is it on the 30th or the 31st?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, he's looking at Saturday. And like I said, he's reached out to a few people who he was trying to coordinate the event with. And Sunday would be a conflict for some people, because I know he was talking about having a DJ, and he had mentioned about cooking out, cooking some hot dogs on a grill.
Oh, awesome. Okay, so how about we table this? And, you know, we can discuss it more after Councilwoman Ivy's presentation. So we'll table this topic and come back to it. Councilwoman Fareed, if you would, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for joining us, Councilwoman Ivy. I know you had a time constraint. Do you still have that time constraint? What's my?
Well, I've. Hi, I've stepped away for a moment. My biggest time constraint was trying to figure out how to get on through the Wi-Fi, which I never did do. Man, I think I'm just getting old, but I came someplace where I could at least make a call, and I'm hoping that I can be helpful in this way.
Okay, okay. So why, why don't we do this? If we could just kind of talk about some of the concerns that have been raised by citizens in the city and just get a sense from you of what, what measures we should take in order to kind of control some of those. So seeding has been an issue that citizens throughout the city, all across the ward, have expressed concern about. And in terms of like seeding cameras or seed bumps or any kind of traffic lights, things like that, what, what does the counties, what, where is the county's responsibility and where is the city's responsibility? Like, can the city go ahead and implement seed bumps, or is that something that we need permission from the county from?
Yes, I hear you. And thank you so much for including me tonight. I really appreciate it. And Councilwoman Fareed, you've been awesome. I, I don't know when you sleep. I'm kind of wondering, because you're, you work really hard. So and we, we need that here and the county and then Glen Arden, so I appreciate that. And I'm sure that the Acting Chief Jackson can address many seeding concerns. But I do want you to know that the city of Glen Arden does have the authority to put up seed bumps and other traffic calming devices within the city limits of Glen Arden. So any road that is a Glen Arden-owned road, it's your road, you get to decide all those issues. If it's a county road, then, you know, you have to go through the process, or some streets are like right on the border, it's really a county road, but it was straight into Glen Arden, and you need help. So that's when you contact me, and I'm very help, I'm happy to help you with getting seed humps or whatever you need there, or to ask the county police to come out and patrol those areas. And, you know, give out one or two tickets, hopefully not to me. And, you know, they really do help. And I'm really also hoping that soon we can get Andrea Lasker, who's with DPWNT and the Vision Zero Program. She's really involved with keeping pedestrians safe and just also cutting down on speeding. So she can't be here tonight. She did send a video. And perhaps at some point during tonight's program, you can send that, you can play that, and she can come at a future meeting, which can be really helpful. And there's also a, there are funds available to municipalities. Nonprofit Prince George's recently had a workshop for municipal mayors to show how the American Rescue Plan dollars can be used. And they're going to be hosting another workshop soon. So for more information, you can call 240-582-5654. And I'm going to repeat that number. Or you can email info@nonprofitpgc.org. So another resource that you might find helpful is the Community Partnership Presentation. This meeting is held a few times a year, where all the agencies come together to share information with the community. So I would love to be able to send you the link to that, for the one that was most recently had. And, and the Councilwoman Fareed, I'll send it to you. I can't put it in the chat because of the constraints of how I'm talking to you. So I do apologize for that. I was all ready to go, and, and then I can't do it. Let's see, there's also a way to find out which streets are Glen Arden streets or county streets or state highway. And even though I'm a county-level person, I can be very helpful with state highway. I used to be in the House of Delegates. I've maintained my contacts. So please let me know if you need any help there. And Councilwoman Fareed, I'm going to send you the link to that as well, which will let you know whether it's a county or a state road. And that's really helpful. So the most important thing I'm going to tell you tonight is if there is a county issue, please do two things. Contact 311 and tell them what your problem is, no matter what the issue, whether it's seeding or anything that's dealing with the county. And then when you call 311, give them your issue. You'll get a ticket number. And that ticket number, if you send it to my office, our office will follow up for you, because everybody's busy. You know, you've got jobs, you've got lives. We don't have anything to do but help you. So you send us your ticket number, and we're going to stay on top of it to make sure that your issue is addressed and can follow up with you about it. So if you send us your ticket number and a general description about what it's about, it's really going to help us stay on top of it for you. And we have two email addresses for you to send your ticket number to. You can do either or or both. Even, no matter how you do it, we're going to get it, and we're going to help you with it. So one is n e greco, n e g r e c o at c o dot p g dot m d dot u s. And then also our, our general office email, which we definitely check very regularly. So no need to worry that it's going to get lost. Council District 5, the number 5, at c o dot p g dot m d dot u s. So either or both email addresses, we're going to get it, and we're going to follow up with whatever your issue is. And that can be, you know, a great way for you to, to stay on top of and get your issues resolved. Are there any questions that I can take for you tonight?
Yes. First, are there any questions from the council members?
Yes. Listening.
Okay. Any, any questions about any one of our citizens? For Councilman Jolene Ivy, as it relates to.
Thank you so much. I'm going to send these links to Councilwoman Fareed, and hopefully she can either email them to people or put them in the chat. And please reach out to me and let me know how I can help you. I know that Councilwoman Fareed's been extremely concerned about the seeding issues as, if I. So hopefully we can get people to slow down, because there's no place that you need to go that's so important, that it's worth putting your safety and the citizens around us' safety at risk. So thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Bye-bye.
Council President, is somebody whose hand is up? Oh, well. Yeah. There's an iPhone whose hand is up.
Well, they can ask their question. We can take it down and follow along.
iPhone, you have your hand raised. And it's gone. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, for your efforts in this and bringing Ms. Ivy on. For all of us citizens who are on the line. You know, I hope you found that information helpful. And when we have the, the, the minutes for this meeting, we'll have all of this written down for you, so you will be able to see it if you weren't able to write everything down tonight. Okay? All right, I did say that we will go back to the topic of discussion, so we can nail this down. And I don't. I'm sorry. iPhone actually put their question in the chat. Did you see that, Ms. Fareed?
I do. I'm going to see, Ms. Greco was still on.
Hi, actually, I'm so sorry. I'm like, I am unmuted. I was trying to make, I could send some information to everyone as I heard Jolene on the phone sharing with you that she, she couldn't. So I see that I was able to send you at least a community partners link to access, which has valuable information attached to it. And then that's also my direct contact for everyone. Please, please contact me anytime. Texting is the best initial way. And, and, and hopefully I enter your phone. Otherwise, you can't leave a message on my cell. I'm not very technical, so I'm not very good at clearing my phone. But I will see that you called, text me, and I'll make sure I call you back. Okay?
So, so Ms. Greco, there's a question about whether or not the county is going to finish repaving 704 Highway. So I, I'm actually, I think 704 is state. So I don't think the county would do that, but to Councilwoman Ivy's point, she can help us with state matters as well.
So, yeah. Actually, we do. We are, we have great ties with all the county agency heads. And also, that's State Highway Administration that's responsible for 704. So, so send me a reminder, please. Send me an email. And then I'll make sure that I, I have more specific news to reply to you with.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greco.
Yeah. Okay, everyone, it's Nikki or Mrs. Greco, because it's 35 years now with that.
Well, Mrs. Greco, thank you very much.
Nikki's fine.
All right. And I think that's all the questions. I don't see any more hands. Councilwoman Jones, I did see your hand. Did you have anything to add?
And I just wanted to say what Councilwoman Fareed and Nikki Greco said, that that 704 is a state highway. That, that piece that was paved in front of the 711, that was thanks to Mr. Timothy George, who was our former city manager. There were so many potholes on that side, and he called diligently. And, and I think that from the result of his calls, that got that, just that section redone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
You're welcome.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks for bearing with me. My eyes are burning for some reason. But we'll move on to, back to the topic of discussion as it relates to trunk or treat, just to nail that down so we can move forward. Because I know it's now October 12th. Half the month is gone. And so were there any other comments on that before we moved on from it? We've established that there's nothing to prevent us from having it in the parking lot. I think Acting Chief Jackson talked about throwing some burgers and hot dogs on the grill and things of that nature. So are we all in accord of having it on that Saturday, which is, I believe, the 30th?
Council President?
Council, oh, Council. Mayor Cross?
Yes, thank you. So on the 30th, you have the Going Green with Prince George's event. You have the Shred Day and Clothing Connection, Collection Day. And then you want to do a trunk or treat. All of this will require not just your police, but you're also, you're going to need your public works and your administration involved. but you're also, you're going to need your public works and your administration involved in this. So I am asking you, I am asking the council to consider that you have already budgeted for an event for our children. Uh, and that is going to be on November the 6th at the City Hall at the Municipal Building. And that's its purpose, is to support our children in that fashion. Uh, there is nothing preventing them from doing other events. I know Prince George's will have a huge trunk or treat. Uh, all children have opportunities to participate in various churches as well. But this is something that was passed in this summer's budget by the council to have a Harvest Day rewind. So it would be appreciated if the council, as well as across the administration and the police, participate in what the city has already allocated funds for. Uh, that will allow us to have a superior event and we can have the hot dogs and hamburgers and all of that on the same day. But it's a day that wouldn't have anything else competing against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, so also on that day, I know that the council is actually having a meeting that day as well. And I know that we want to participate in all the events uh in the city, uh, which we do plan to do. But um the trunk or treat, as Councilwoman Fareed said, is not a um uh a council event. It's thrown every year by um a Glen Arden Police Department. Uh, so we'll leave it up to uh, you know, Chief Jackson on, and I think you said, um Sergeant Richardson on what day that you you want to have it. You know, uh, it'll be your choice. Uh, uh, Councilman Jones.
Uh, if the partners, usually the police department, when they do their community events, they usually get partners to help them out, uh, different vendors. Uh, like, for instance, maybe Wegmans or whoever else to give them a hand. If they've already nailed that down to uh given, have given them a date already as to when this is going to take place and they, you know, put their resources, uh, had their resources ready for a particular date that Sergeant Richardson may have negotiated. Uh, like I said, this uh, the 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 print, I'm sorry, the Glen Arden Police Department has their own community outreach budget. And this is a part of their community, which is, which was also uh budgeted in the uh budget that went, that was passed this past summer. So they had their own community uh uh community outreach budget that they use to uh do events. And if it's already been decided with their partners, when it's going to be done, I think that um to change the date on the partners would be um kind of out of plaque. So, but that, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
I just have one last comment on this.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, there are are 6,000 residents in the city of Glen Arden. Every event is not going to reach the full breadth of them. I think the more activities that we have, um, allows for more engagement. And and I think Councilman Herring made the point that there's there's no child that's going to be upset by having multiple opportunities to, you know, receive candy. So I think, you know, let this be a lesson learned for us also in terms of communication and and coordination so that we kind of have a schedule of what's going on. So we're not doing this at, you know, the last moment. Um, when we approve a budget, we don't approve the specific activities under it. Um, I don't think that there was an intention for there to be a conflict or a perceived conflict in the in the event. But at this point, it's already October 12th. And if they're going to do something, we need to get the word out. We need to get um citizens who are going to participate engaged so that they can have their trunks decorated and and have candy available for the children that will participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, Chief Jackson?
Yes, um, just a few things. First of all, October the 30th is one of our overlap shift days. And mostly, the majority of the officers are going to be here. And I think a lot of them would like to participate in the trunk or treat. And I think some of the um event coordinators that Sergeant Richardson had reached out to, like I said, some of those day, day, other dates are like conflict of scheduling for them. So um, most of the people that, some of the people that he's reached out to are available on that Saturday and not that Sunday. And um, and November the 6th, I plan on having all the officers here for uh the community outreach. So the, so the public can meet the police officers and see the officers and see us in a different uh limelight, to see what we do, to see how we interact. And um, and get to meet the officers that patrol the city. Something that hasn't been done in a while. And I think that's important.
Thank you, Chief uh Jackson. I think it's important too. And just want to uh commend you officers for working the MLK Artmore Art Week uh day. Uh, you know, saw police officers engage with community. One officer was actually playing uh basketball with the citizens and was actually dominating uh with all of his uniform on, uh, had a pretty good shot. So um appreciate all that your officers do. Uh, and anytime that we can get our officers out there in front of people to engage the the city is great. So we do it on the 30th and the 6th, even more opportunity for for more people to engage. Because some people that come on a 6th won't be able to make it the 30th. And some people come on the 30th, won't be able to make it on the 6th. Uh, so, thank you.
And I do, and I would like to comment on the speeding. Um, just last week on our overlap shift, I uh, I assigned all the senior officers uh with duties and tasks and responsibilities. And I have assigned two officers to be in charge of our little traffic unit that we're going to put together. And now that, since we can move the speed cameras around, we will be trying to coordinate our efforts to uh do radar, do radar training and radar enforcement, uh, LADA and radar. Matter of fact, I got an email today from the County Special Operations Division. And they're going to be putting on a radar, LADA class in uh November. And I'm going to send the less experienced officers who haven't been trained to that training. It's a five day training.
Thank you. Good news. All right. If that's it for
I just want to confirm from Lieutenant Richardson, you do have vendors that have secured for the 30th or you do not?
I think he, I think he's reached out to a few who had, who'd said they could commit to the 30th. And like I said, I'll, and I'll talk to him tomorrow when he comes in and find out exactly um who does, who has he gotten uh commitments from? And uh, we will let you all know.
Chief, uh, Acting Chief Jackson, he's on the line. LT Richardson?
No, that's, I think Lieutenant Robinson is on the line. I don't think Sergeant Richardson is on.
Yeah, I don't see him either, Mayor Cross.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, next, um, we're going to, we posted the resolution for the appointment of um Jeffrey Hammond to the Glen Arden Youth Advisory Committee online. There's some minor edits as it relates to the resolution number. Uh, and um, some other, you know, formatting things that doesn't take away from the substance of the resolution. But we've, before we vote on a resolution, we wanted to open the floor to the citizens for comment specifically on this resolution. There'll be another opportunity for citizens to comment overall at the end on things you want to bring up. But this particular session is, uh, section is just for the resolution uh on the appointment of uh Mr. Hammond to the Youth Advisory Committee. So I want to open the floor uh to those comments, if there are any. Uh, Mr. or Mrs. Blue? Lou, I see that your hand is raised. And now you're on mute, so we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, uh, Ms. Smallwood, is that you?
I have a question. And my question is, um, what is his qualifications as being uh able to be on the Youth Advisory Committee? What does he do? What, what has he done to say that he's uh able to bring in certain types of program into the city?
Thank you. Good question, Ms. Smallwood. He has over 20 years of experience uh working with the youth in uh the, in DC. Um, he's engaged youth on several, several levels. Uh, he's also helped in the city of Glen Arden by starting the um uh, Mr. Hammond, you can help me with this.
B and D, B and D, uh, weekend delivery.
Yes. Uh, weekend delivery, which was an um, an engagement that he founded and started to get the the youth in Glen Arden engaged and away from them to make a little bit of money uh during the the summer months. Um, and so he is, his whole life has been dedicated to, to the youth, whether in DC or in other places. Uh, the council has gone into, the entire council has gone into um a closed session to interview Mr. Hammond. He was also interviewed by uh Mayor Cross. Um, and the uh consensus was that he is highly qualified to be a part of this uh, this committee. His, his passion, his drive, his experience uh makes him qualified for this uh position, for this appointment, I should say.
Um, so what age group is he working with?
I'm sorry?
What age group would he be working with?
Well, he's just on the, on the advisory committee that will be giving advice on things on a ways we need to engage our youth. So I don't
But my question was, what age are you going to start at? 13 to 12, uh, 13 to 19, 13 to 21, or what age group?
Well, uh, currently, you know, Mayor Cross has to form the entire committee and then they'll discuss what needs to be done. But Mayor Cross, uh, see your hand can jump in here.
Thank you, Council President. So uh, former Councilwoman Smallwood, uh, the resolution, which did um formulate the Youth Advisory Committee uh in by its bylaws, dates back to February 13th, 2012. Uh, the Youth Advisory Committee essentially is a committee of five personnel. Uh, the five personnel will basically hold regular meetings, distribute an agenda and preside, if you will, over reports to the city council administration in accordance with the city charter. And as well, uh, maintain a current list of officers to hold such said office, being able to support the youth. So this is an advisory uh committee, essentially, uh, which works towards supporting events that are edifying and that builds our youth uh mentally and emotionally, if you will, in our community. Uh, and that includes things like, uh, if we do a trunk or treat or Harvest Day Rewind or, you know, a Christmas party for the youth. Things that are relative to ensuring that their state of mind in our community is included. So this committee, uh, by its resolution, uh, 1112012, essentially uh ensures that there is a committee whose entire purpose is to include our youth in our community. And um, we would have uh, obviously, youth that will range from various ages at these events, uh, at which case I will like to report to the citizens that Mr. Hammond has successfully passed both fingerprinting and background checks being done by the city of Glen Arden with flying colors.
Okay, but you still haven't answered my question. My question is, what age group would Mr. Hammond be reaching out to to bring these programs into the city? I just need a age range.
Well, that's, that's the thing. There, there isn't an age range in your, in the bylaws for this particular position. Uh, it simply is written in as an youth advisory. So the ages can range from different age groups. Um, we would expect, obviously, if there are youth like babies, that they will be with their parents. Uh, mental supervision up to age 13.
Ms. Cross, I understand you wouldn't have a baby in a youth program. An age range usually starts for, for youth between the ages of 10 to 18 or or 13 to 18. What age grant will he be doing for the city of Glen Arden?
Ms. Lou? Good evening.
Mister um, Mr. Hammond, if you could hold on one second, please.
Yes, thank you. So it's, it's not that Ms. uh, Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Smallwood. The age group um would be the age of 13 up to the age of 2021. Uh, but we have in the bylaws that is pretty much uh, given this Youth Advisory Committee the opportunity to exist, no definitives as to what age group they are able to work with. So if there is a need for there to be an age group, then we would then need a resolution modification or um, the resolution would have to be modified to include that. Uh, it has never been an issue where they would have a specific numbering. Uh, for every one of our uh events that is planned by the Youth Advisory Committee, the age groups do vary. So there isn't anything in our charter or the resolution bylaws that particularly identifies a certain age group that um Mr. Hammond would be interfacing with. And I do remind you that this is a committee of five. And they are essentially the planners, if you will, of opportunities. And their responsibility is to recommending programs and services that positively impact the lives of our Glen Arden youths while improving their quality of life as well. So they will speak on behalf of how much this administration is or is not doing, as well as propose uh fun activities for them to participate. So the uh Youth Advisory Committee, which we are recommending Mr. Hammond for, again, having passed fingerprinting and background check, will serve as a liaison between the city administration and the local youth groups. And that includes other groups in the community as well. So First Baptist Church of Glen Arden, if they have groups. If the school wants to do anything, they would serve as the liaison for this admini- forgive me, for this administration uh to be made aware of all things that improve the overall quality of life for our children, uh, as well as recommend programs and services that can positively impact the lives of our youth as well. So they are a committee, uh, not just a fun planning group, but they actually do have a purpose of ensuring the inclusion and quality of life for our youth is not forgotten.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Any other questions before, uh, from any other citizens before we move on to the reading of the resolution? Thank you, Ms. Smallwood, for your, for your question. If you can mute yourself now, uh, that'll be great. Thank you. Okay. Well, with no other questions, uh, Madam Clark, I'll read the resolutions because I uh made some modifications only to the number, uh, because I think this is resolution number four. And I think we posted resolution number three. And I will share my screen if I can, Ms. Jones. All right. All right, uh, resolution number R zero four. I'm sorry, uh, do I have to bring this to the, to the floor first or can I read it? Uh, Councilman Harry? I don't want to be out of order here.
Yeah, yeah, you need to, it needs to be introduced.
Okay, thank you. I knew I was missing something. Uh, do I have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor?
So move.
Uh, second?
Second.
Second is Councilman Gilliam, discussion. Okay, I'll move forward with the reading. Resolution R dash zero four dash two zero two two, introduced by uh Perkers, uh, second, uh, Council President. At the request of the administration, this At the request of the administration, this is a regular session on October the twelfth, twenty twenty-one. A resolution to appoint Jeffrey P. Hammond to the Glen Arden Youth Advisory Committee. Whereas by resolution R twenty-two dash twenty-ten, the council established the Glen Arden Youth Advisory Committee, which is composed of five members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. And whereas the Youth Advisory Committee is a public body and must comply with the Maryland Opens Meetings Act. And whereas the commission was established to develop and recommend a plan for the city to bring programs and services to city youth. And whereas the council wishes to approve the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey P. Hammond to the Youth Advisory Committee, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this twelfth day of October twenty twenty-one as follows. The term of office shall be two years, October twelfth, twenty twenty-one through October twelfth, should be the eleventh, sorry. October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to Jeffrey P. Hammond be, and he is hereby approved as an appointment to the Youth Advisory Committee. And three of these resolutions that take effect immediately following approval by the council and a favorable background check administered by the city of Glen Arden, which, again, he has already taken and has passed. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call in approving this resolution?
Yes, thank you.
On the order, Mr. President, motion, I move that we accept resolution R zero four twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was that a motion?
Yes.
All right, well.
Sorry.
First by Councilman Herring, second by Councilwoman Gillian. Thank you, Councilman Herring. Now, Madam Clerk.
Right, thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillian?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven yeses. This has, resolution has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And welcome Mr. Hammond to the Youth Advisory Committee. Wish you all the, all the success. And as we mentioned in our closed session, the committee will have the support of the council as we are, you know, very interested and involved in, want to be involved with just making the city a better place for our youth and help advancing our youth and mentoring our youth. So anything we can do to help the committee, you have our full support. So, welcome, Mr. Hammond. With that, we will move on to all of the administrative reports by the administration. Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. So today, the administrative reports to be administered are the mayor, city manager reports, your treasurer report, chief of, acting chief of police report, and any updates. So we'll start with.
Just one, one point, Mayor Cross, that you need to share your screen for. I know that citizens commented last time of being able to see the actual treasurer's reports, they could see the numbers. So just if you needed to share a screen, that is available. Ms. Jones, if you can make that available. You have the opportunity to do that. Just wanted to make that point, no?
Let's see how that works. I would, I sent these out early so that they could be delivered to the citizens, and that way they would have an opportunity to have a copy on their computer. Okay. Do you see my screen?
No, we do not.
How about now?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Good evening, citizens. This is the administrative report. Mayor Kishine Cross with your administrative staffing reporting review. I'll just go through the wave tops. If there are any deep dives, then we have our administration there, able to answer those questions. We have partnered on many occasions with our district to do various efforts. One in which that we were able to do is to partner with the Glen Arden Housing Authority. We also partnered with the Prince George's Community Outreach to support one of our own who fell upon misfortune. Have to report that our misfortune has met with pleasurable returns. And the gentleman that ended up going homeless has now found an opportunity with constant recovery. We had an opportunity to tour the MLK site as we were looking at the permitting process, which now has to be completed for the MLK site. This was asked by citizen previous meeting. Essentially, what we have here, the permit that was requested with DEPI essentially had our dealer departed chief O'Donnell's name on it. So we will have to do our paperwork again with another POC. The expect POC would have, would be the city manager, which we are now in the process of hiring that person. So then we'll move forward with the MLK site. And we have recovered some of the artifacts out of that facility in the meantime. We did leverage Cross Videoology to support Glen Arden Art Week Ardmore event, which was an amazing event that happened on the twenty-fifth of September. Over a hundred and fifty attendees were in, in attendance. It was a successful event held under Glen Arden permit on the grounds of the Martin Luther King site. It did bolster a lot of fun activity and laughter for all. The executive resources, I will highlight this for the citizens, that there has been a superb wait over the last, for the first thirty days of this administration with the executive resources not being filled. We are working, you know, extremely hard, making recommendations to council for city manager, director of public works as well. We're getting ready for our chief of police selections as we go forward, just to give you education that we do have an executive assistant now that will come in on the eighteenth of October. So we're excited to receive Mr. Jordan McLung. We have coordinated the attendance for the Prince George's Park Police, Lieutenant Brian Waters, and District Four School Board, Shayla Adams, for the twenty-first of September council special session. Each one of those sessions did yield responses to citizens relative to park safety for areas that are common grounds for the park police patrol, and also information relative to the school board and actions that they are taking concerning our children. We are also coordinating a response for the confirmation, if you will, of the current municipal center, Public Works Garage and Facilities. We have received a approval or a support, if you will, from the council president, council vice president, who have had an opportunity to see the Public Works Garage and Facilities. The facility has suffered over the years from neglect and its present condition. In this administration's opinion is visually unappealing, as well as presents a concern for the working conditions of the, the employees that are asked to work in the environment each day. The administration will take corrective actions to rightsize this facility from its dilapidated state to a state of excellence, as we are expected for this city. We are endorsing under resolution. We are grateful for Jeff Hammond and the council endorsing and bringing him on to the Glen Arden Administrative Advisory Committee. I'm sure he'll do fantastic. As far as HR, we are underway for the director of public work, city manager, chief of police, executive assistant has been hired. Plus, we do have a significant amount of reevaluations that are required for other major position descriptions. One of the things that I'll talk to you citizens about is the need for our position descriptions to evolve based on what the city needs today. Many of our position descriptions are not adequate enough, if you will, for the requirements of our city. And we have been working extensively with our HR head of HR, Ms. Kevin, Ms. Karen Schultz, and we're moving forward in the right direction to evolve those position descriptions. The mayor's office has supported and fielded nine external partners' office calls, including the Glen Arden Historical Society. We did get a chance to speak to the former television studio manager, as been requested by many of our citizens. We also looked at three candidates for District Twenty-four office who came by to speak to the administration, as well as J and L Towing. And we supported the Ivy Community Charities of Prince George's in their opening of a new facility, which caters to women that have been incarcerated and now returning to society. Midnight Basketball had an opportunity to meet with Nelson Standifer, the regional director, as he's leveraging the city for its support in re-energizing what was such a successful program in the past. The timing and coordination, of course, with the, the county police will have to be taken into consideration. Fully Restoring Every Son's Hope is an education for the Fourth and Fifth Amendment training, which the city is looking to partner with as this is coming into police, police actions, corrections that have come down from the House and the Senate in Annapolis. This is in response to those legislations to support training our youth on their Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights, in hopes that we will preserve our youth from having to endure any police brutality while they're out there on the streets. We have fielded comments regarding to the color of the city marquee. This is in reference to former Councilwoman Smallwood. Did give us a phone call. We have taken corrective actions to fix the marquee color schema, but we have also taken corrective actions to minimize the verbiage on it and increase the font size. And it looks much better. So thank you for the recommendation. We will have the inaugural stand-up of tea talks with the mayor. We are looking at making sure that we, we send out to the citizens a quarterly update in the form of a three-calender postcard that you'll be able to put on your refrigerator. The intent of this postcard is essentially to have not only the administrative activities, but the council activities, so that you'll have one place to pull all of your activities that are upcoming, and you can effectively plan for those attendances. So I was able to attend my first mayor's, Maryland Black Mayors Association meeting, was able to propose fifteen recommended updates to the organization's bylaws as the newest person to the mayoral group. Was able to forecast some issues where there could be trouble in various areas. And we are looking also in women's mental health and awareness as we will turn to support from the University of Maryland and the Regional Medical Centers of Prince George's. So this was extremely fruitful and lively meeting. Look forward to more meetings with the Maryland Black Mayors Association. We are projected to, from an administration, maintain a list of current and standby volunteers. So we've also placed this on the marquee. Please, if citizens want to be involved in these events, they're not paid. They're service events. Please email Mcheek@cityofglenarden.org as she is keeping a list of volunteers, and when the time comes, we'll be able to actively call on citizens for their support. The mayor's office has locked in external office calls for the future engagement with Congressman Brown. We'll also be celebrating the inauguration of the eighteenth mayor of the city of Glen Arden this October the fifteenth at Camelot by Martins. I would like to acknowledge that there were several tickets that had been donated for our seniors to attend and youth that were in high school coming into college to attend. To the sum total of about thirty-five tickets were given away in that respect. So I, I do want to acknowledge the supporters that did come forward. Supporters like the Democratic National Convention, supporters like the Proctor family, and supporters like, you know, community supporters all, all across the community have come forward essentially to make sure that this event is able to include senior citizens at a free cost, as well as rising youth. Those tickets have been in the administrative offices for pickup. It's all clear regarding to the request for proposal relative to our video production services. We inquired of the city attorney if we could actually produce the RFP, request for proposals to get a new video production manager in. It would be a contract job, part-time, and this person would be a new hire, expected to possess the expertise to conduct hand-on rectification of any issues that will arise with our television station from this point forward and be able to do upgrades and orders in conjunction with the administration and the media webmaster, Ms. Monae Ward. Harvest Day Rewind, we've talked about already, just another push for that. November sixth is the day. Hopefully that we will have a fantastic event, no rain, but we're looking forward to that. There is plan for the administration to visit the Glen Arden Housing Authority and set up a residents' town hall, while many of which are not in Glen Arden, born in Glen Arden. The, the fact that the housing authority is in Glen Arden, they have stepped up as well to be a community partner with this administration. So we'll set up residents' town hall to make sure that as a city, we're doing what we can to ensure that the housing authority is suited well in the city of Glen Arden. So Local Spotlight, the American Legion Post Two Seventy-Five, working with them on the amateur radio tin, discussing bringing in real-time connectivity for emergency preparedness. They will sponsor us a radio, which gives us real-time connection to emergency reporters all over the, the country. So we're looking forward to partnering with the American Legion on that. We also improving our community communications program. Code Red is unsolved solution that many municipalities are using. Code Red will allow us to have a significant growth in our strategy for pulling together communications plan to ensure the safety of our residents in times of need. We'll be coming around during door knocking, we'll do postcards, we'll do home phone calls. We will figure out the best way that Glen Arden citizens would like to be contacted. We also are looking at rebirthing our city of Glen Arden e-Bulletin, the Glen Arden Post. In the meantime, I spoke to the value of postcards, so we will be producing a quarterly postcard of events to make sure that our citizens will have the most opportunity to participate. The Growing Green with Pride will happen on the thirtieth of October. That will be on Saturday from eight AM to twelve PM. This is a county-wide beautification strategy. We do pray that the citizens will have an opportunity to come out and support with the beautification of our city as we go grab-and-go style, picking up litter, supplies, and planting plants as we go along. With that report, I want to now transition to our treasurer report. The treasurer report from Mr. Dean Stewart. We have completed our payroll processing for the periods ending in September the fourth. We have completed our bill pay for the weeks of September third, tenth, and seventeenth. We continue to progress in scanning and filing our accounting documents as we prepare for our audit. We have payments that have gone, that were done to our retirement account for the week of the seventeenth, and we have completed our bank reconciliation of operating banks for the periods of July twenty twenty through June twenty twenty-one. We are cleaning up our account balances as we prepare again for our FY twenty twenty-two audit. This report was prepared for our treasurer as well. We are moving We are moving forward with our ARP reporting. As the council president has communicated, there's a couple of meetings that the council will set forth. The administration will set forth and will combine our meetings for the success of the ARP reporting as well as assessing what we will actually do for the American Rescue Plan money as it will benefit the city. For our chief's report from September the first, we do have calls relatively to unfortunately passing away of our chief. But we have reported on these things. We'll go forward as we go into our first day of school. We did assist with traffic control on September the seventh. The second day of school, we were able to go back out again and assist with traffic control. I will acknowledge that our police officers, our police, acting police chief Jackson and our police officers have done a superior job in reconnecting to our school systems. So we're really proud of them for that. Lieutenant Robinson was able to attend an MML conference which was held in Ocean City, Maryland, September thirteenth through September the sixteenth. Will report that Mayor Cross, myself, has just returned from the fall MML conference. Should have added that to our previous reporting, which was the tenth through the twelfth. So it just concluded today. We do have, as of September twentieth, newly hired police candidates, candidate Thompson and Jennifer, which started their employment with the agency. They're replacing officer positions that were vacated by Corporal Simpson and Officer Vega. We were able to speak with Councilman Herring and Harriston on September twenty-third and also spoke with them relative to the exponement event, which is scheduled for October the twenty-third. So we'll correct that reporting, October the twenty-third.
All right.
And let's see if I got here.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. You can stop sharing your screen now. It should be at the top of your screen. It should say stop sharing.
Let's see, do you see it? Did it stop yet?
No, it didn't. Chief Jackson, could you put yourself on mute, please? All right. Thank you, Mayor Cross, for your report. Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, I have a couple of questions here. MLK site, Mayor Cross. I heard that you've had a hold put on a permit to take that building down. And I'm trying to figure out why. We met with citizens, we met with the citizens that are directly impacted by that building. And almost a hundred of them signed a petition to have that building taken down. And I'm not understanding why you are having this hold put on the permit, because I was told that you had a hold put on that permit. That is not a historical building, and it really bothers me that you didn't even come to me as a war one representative to even say that's what you were doing. And that you're listening to a person who lives in war two, Mr. Lawrence Winston, on the historical significance of that building. Mr. Winston, along with Ms. Ms. Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Smallwood and Ms. Butler, all in the same meeting when the Historical Society or Historical Register said that there was no historical buildings in the city of Glen Arden. So to continue to say that that building has some historical significance is not true. The building has fallen and the roof has caved in, the ceiling has fallen in, all the pipe has been, all the copper has been pulled out of the walls, out of the building. The toilets have been broken up and trashed. The building is in utter, utter disrepair and it's been sitting up there and the people want the building down. So why, I would like to know, why are you holding up that permit? You don't have to have a city manager to, to, to put in, as a point of contact. You can have the, the either acting chief Jackson can be, or you can have the code enforcement officer, Jerry Thompson can be the point of contact. That building needs to come down. I'd like to know why are you holding up this permit? Citizens have spoken, the citizens said they want it down. And there's no artifacts in that building whatsoever. Any artifacts you found, I can guarantee you they're not artifacts. I've been in that building a number of times and nothing was in there but a bunch of trash. So I'd just like to know why are you holding up that permit for to get this building down? We got a contractor, he gives a nice discount on the, on the price to take the building down. Also, to not take that building down means that we have to turn back in that grant. If we turn back in that grant, don't look for the city to get another one. Also, as long as we got that grant in place, we cannot apply for another open space grant for other parks. So we need to move forward, get that building down, do what we gotta do for that project, get it closed out so that we can be on time to get more grants when the session opens up next year. So I'd just like, I'd like for you to explain to me and to the, a hundred citizens that signed a petition and the other six hundred homes over here who want that building down, why are you holding up that permit on, on demolition of that building?
Thank you, Councilman Herring. So when I was briefed on this permit and the demolition plan for the Marlisa King Building, I was also briefed on that there were citizens who were concerned about the fact that it would be torn down and wanted to actually preserve it. Now, as I spoke to code enforcement, Mr. Jerry Thomas, what he told me that we do need to have the permitting process redone because the current person on that permit for demolition is unfortunately Chief O'Donnell. Now, I don't know why it wasn't your name, Councilman Herring, as a consistent member of, of, of this process. And I think that's possibly the right name to have on it. But as of right now, with both Tim Joyce, Tim George no longer being affiliated with the city, as well as Chief O'Donnell, no longer with the city. Those are the only two persons who are on all the permitting. The permit needs to be updated. So I have not put a hold on it, rather have asked Mr. Thomas to ensure that we get the permit updated. Because we do not have at this point a sitting city manager, I am comfortable of putting your name on the permit, Councilman Herring, as the lead on this permitting process, if that's acceptable.
No, because I work, you know, the person on that permit should be able to go down to DEPI and deal with those, deal with those situations. I can't take off my job to go down there. I mean, put Mr. Thomas, he's a code enforcement officer. He should be on there as a point of contact. He's, he's approving the permits in the city, so he should know what he's looking at when he go down there. You need somebody that can go down to DEPI and I'm, I'm, I can't run down to DEPI.
I understand that, Councilman Herring, and putting Mr. Thomas on there is a conflict of interest. So he is the city. So with that, we need to have a, a full-time person on staff, which is why we've worked so hard to try and get a city manager in here to support the things that the city needs to move forward. At this time, we have an acting city manager, which is Acting Chief Jackson. Chief Jackson as the captain of the, of the police force right now running as well as acting chief of the police, as well as captain of the police, does, cannot run down to the environment as well. So we are in essentially a, a pattern where we need to get a city manager into the administration to handle the needs of the administration. City manager has been recommended to the council. We are waiting on some resolve on that. But in the meantime, that's essentially where the holdup is. We need a permanent body to handle the city's business. Mr. Thomas is not the right person to be placed on that.
Ma- Madam Mayor, that is not true. He is the perfect person to be put on that. Because he is code enforcement, he approves our permits. It is not a conflict. He is a full-time employee for the city of Glen Arden. Just as this, Mr. George was, just as the chief was, that is not a conflict. They just need a person on there to address the issues. He's been, he's been a point person so far on this situation. So that is not true. So I just want him, I want him to be put on there so that we can get this building down. This is a holdup and I see it as a stall tactic in trying to hold up the process because you're going to hold it up until we get a city manager and as you try to get it, as we try to get a city manager, the clock is ticking down on that whole project. And if we gotta turn our money back in, it's going to affect every other park that we have that we're trying to get funding for. Now, if you saying you for the people and you're going to do for the people, then you need to listen to the hundred people and the six hundred people over here in this ward that want that building down. Now, I have no problem. You know, I know, I know half of them are not on here, but I have no problem sending, as you know, letters at any time notifying them of the situation at hand and why that building is not down because I really am tired of them asking me, when is this building coming down, when is this building coming down? And I'm telling them it's coming down soon. And now I'm going to have to go back and look like, look like a fool and say, well, it's being held up. And I'm going to tell them exactly why it's being held up. Because what you're doing is not right to the citizens who live here and who sit here. You say, you always talk about the history of Glen Arden, history of Glen Arden. You know, the history of Glen Arden is that we all work together and try to better this community as a whole and not just listen to one person who came to you, who does not, who, who, who gave you erroneous information from the start. You know, and you didn't come to the citizens who live around this, live around this building to even ask them their opinion on it. But I'm going to afford you, I'm going to afford you the petition that I have in place that I have, that I've gotten from these citizens. And I will write all of these citizens because it's my, my responsibility as their elected representative to let them know where we are with the building. And I would tell them exactly what you said. And I'm telling you right now, I know what you're saying is not true. I know that is not true. You're gonna, you can put anybody on there as a point of contact. And I've dealt with DEPI long enough to know in my seventeen years on this council that you can put any point of contact on there. It is not a conflict of interest. You know, I'm trying to work as a unified body with you and with, and, and the council is trying to work as a unified body. And we're trying to get things done and to hold this, this up, I don't think it's fair to the citizens over here who want that building down.
With all due respect, with all due respect, Councilman Herring, this is, this, this building has been in permitting for over two years. So this just didn't happen yesterday. There was many opportunities over the course of the last two years to get the building torn down. What I will commit to you is if we're going to communicate to the citizens that we communicate the truth and the facts is that this has been a twenty-year dilapidated state and this building did not get dilapidated overnight. So I will take action to follow up with DEPI appropriately as well as with our code enforcement. But I, I do want to make sure that we do not put the wrong information out there to our citizens. I am not holding it up. However, this is a process, unfortunately, which had a permit which was approved over a year ago, which no one actioned on.
There, there actually, there was action on it. It was a number of issues with that building. We had to go through the same permitting process that the, that DEPI required us. We had to get asbestos tests, we had to get lead tests, all of those came back negative. You had to go through a whole process. The process, the reason why the process took so long because of COVID, people not in the departments and is that everything was dragging out. The whole permitting process across the county was dragging out. It normally doesn't take this long. So it took this long for a reason because of a pandemic. But I'm just going to say, I'm just saying that I would just, I, I, I'm not going to sit there and tell them, I'm telling them what you said. You know, because I know for a fact that you don't need the city manager in place to take that building down. They're ready to take it down. We got a good deal on the demolition crew. He's gay, he gave us a great discount. Because he said we're a municipality and he's trying to help out, help us out, but he's not going to hold that price forever. And I don't think it's fair to allow, to, to think he's going to. So I'm hoping that you move forward with this process so we can get this building down. He was ready to take the building down last week until a hole got put on the, got, got put on, uh, got put on the permit. And that's what DEPI, now that's what DEPI, now you need to talk to DEPI because they're saying that you said a whole, you're, you want to hold on that permit because you want to keep the building. And that's what's being relayed to me from DEPI.
And I'll definitely follow up with DEPI. But I do want to make sure that we're, when we communicate to our citizens that we are communicating a solid and a correct story. And I am for the people and we will take care in accordance. But I do want to acknowledge that this is a holdover from a long time ago that we're having to fix and we will fix it. I have the report on the asbestos for any citizen that would like to review it. Please email me at C Cross at City of Glen Arden dot O R G. I'll be happy to share the details. But we'll take care of that, Councilman Herring, no problem at all. But I do want to follow up with DEPI because that was the information that I received that because of the, the former city manager, Tim George, and the former chief of police who was then acting city manager, Chief O'Donnell were no longer with us, that the permitting process would need to be resubmitted. But I will follow up first thing.
All right, okay. So I'm going to move on to another topic. You said you went to the fall, MM, fall MML conference. Now, I was thinking about going to that, but I knew we don't have a credit card. Do we have a credit card? Does the city have a credit card? Because normally we put the registrations on a credit card. Does the city have a credit card? Because I know we didn't have one because of Mr. Brandon left. Has that been resolved?
Thank you for that question and thank you again for bringing that up. So yes, that has been resolved. Unfortunately, I did not have an opportunity to use this credit card for this. We actually did send a purchase order and a check to the hotel for the conference as well. So we do have a city credit card now. The finance manager has it for our availability as a city when these things come up. We are also going to work on making sure that we get our per diem ahead of our people going out the door. I will communicate to you, council, as well as the citizens, that that didn't hot, did not happen for this fall MML. So I had to go forward without any per diem to support this event. So that will be rectified in the future to make sure that whenever we have an approved sending people out for training or otherwise, that we are being good stewards and supporting our people ahead of them leaving the door. So we do have a credit card in, in our office, so that issue has been resolved. We did not get a chance to use that for MML. We did use our purchase order and checking process.
Well, as for the per diem, you're still entitled to a per diem, even though you, if you use money out of your pocket, I hope you're going to submit your receipt to get reimbursed. You should not have to pay for that.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Herring. I, I did speak to Mr. Stewart, our treasurer today, about the processes and how to get that taken care of and provided the receipts.
Okay, well, who's on, okay, I know a name had to be put on the credit card. So whose name is on the credit card?
So currently you have the credit cards in, in the name of the treasurer and then you have the credit cards in the, the mayor's name. We do not have our city manager as of yet. But when the city manager comes, then you'll have one in the city manager's name.
Okay, I have a major problem with this because you have a credit card in the name of it. He's a temp, correct, Mr. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Stewart has been brought on in the capacity of treasurer. And with, all these things are attached to our city. And in that capacity, just same as he is a supervisor of the personnel that are in that shop, he is given the authorities under representing the city financially in the audit that's coming up for FY twenty-two. So he's been held to the accountabilities, if you will, of being a treasurer.
Councilman Herring, just to step in for context for you. He did contact me, said that the credit cards were arrived. I told him to not use any of the credit cards to put them to the side until there was a comprehensive credit card policy in place that's reviewed and approved by the council. So they have the credit cards and we can talk about the policy because I haven't seen one yet. Nothing has been provided. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. He did present a draft policy to me. And the, the, the thought was to finalize the policy, present it to the council and then the council can decide, you know, the, you know, if we approve for that, that policy or not. But just to give you context on your line of questioning.
Okay, thank you. Because I do have a problem with this because I know we've never put, we stopped putting elected officials on credit cards years ago. We've never done that. We only do it with staff. And staff that are hired by the city. Mr. Dean is a temp. I don't understand why you would put the name of a temp on our city credit card. I've never seen that done before in all my, my jobs have had, never.
I believe Mr. Bratton had a credit card in his name as well when he was a temp from Robert Hare.
No. Councilwoman Smallwood, could you please mute yourself? We can hear you.
Yes. So that, that's what we are under the, that's what I was told. Mr. Brighton had a credit card when he was a temp as well, under his name. The, the, we do have a use policy. When he was a temp uh as well, under his name. Uh, the, the, we do have a use policy. That will be uh founded. Um, the point is, we do need the credit card for the city. Uh, we have had several uh use cases where uh the city has not been able to conduct this mission successfully. Because of the purchase order or check process and making sure that we are trusted agents with said companies. It's just an archaic way of doing business. Uh, the credit card comes with a track record and a history of use. And uh we will prosecute anybody that violates that use uh with the fullest extent of the law. But we won't treat our people like criminals at this point. Uh, we are going to need to move forward with our city's business and right now. Uh, having it gives us an opportunity to do that. Uh, we do have a use policy that has been submitted to council president. Uh, we'll review that with the council and correct that, and again, we'll go forward with the knowledge that. There is the law of prosecution for anyone who does violate this use policy.
Um, I'm not saying anybody's gonna do anything, but you don't open yourself up to that type of liability when you're, when, when, when you have a credit card. That basically is being used by somebody who's a temp position, in a temp position who could be gone tomorrow if he decides to find another, another position. Or gets reassigned to another position, then what you gonna do? You know, I'm not saying you need to, the, the car should be in somebody's name, uh, an employee's name who's there permanently. I've always said it should be one of the young ladies in there, and they could take that and lock it up in the, in the city manager's office, because that seemed to only be the constant down in there to stay. Um, at least have it down there, but um, I'll move on to another uh item that I'm asking, I might ask about, okay, um. Yeah, you talking about the different programs you're having. You having a pajama jam? And you having kids come to the municipal center in their pajamas and bring in their blankets for a movie from seven to ten P M?
So we're, we're having a uh Christmas um, uh Polar Express. So with that, it's just a, a way of, of communicating, but they're welcome to come in whatever they desire to come in. Um, we have seen this done in many of our uh schools uh in Prince George's County. Uh, this is a program that has been sanctioned by the county uh schools. Uh, so we are extending that effort, if you will, to our city. Uh, the intent is to have something for our children. Every year, we have a Christmas party for the adults, but we have never had anything for our children. At Christmas, other than um a few times where we've had presents by Santa. So we're also uh going to uh get the pink fire truck out uh and have presents for our children. Drive through our neighborhood uh with our Santa. And uh make this your season, something special for our kids as well as for our adults. So the intent is to give the children an opportunity to celebrate Christmas with their city. Uh, as well as the adults, uh, which the council uh need to understand if you are having a Christmas party this year. Uh, the administration has asked on several occasions, but uh we still haven't received word as to whether you will or not.
Okay, um, now, I, I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, actually, I have a problem with the whole pajama jam thing. I don't think. Well, what we went through a couple of years back, no kid should be coming up in that building with no pajamas and blankets or whatever. I think if you wanna have it, it should be from noon to four during daytime hours. Um. We went through, we just city almost, I mean, I'm not saying nothing's gonna happen, but I just don't, I just, I just, I'm just not comfortable with it after going through what we went through. With that Caraway case, I'm just, that's just me. Um.
And I'm sorry that the Caraway case had happened to our city. Um, I really am. Uh, I do ask though. That we, we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Uh, our children are our precious assets and this administration, uh, me having my own children. Uh, age nine and twelve will never allow anything to happen on my watch to our children. Uh, which is why you'll always see me as mayor and as parent there whenever children are present. Uh, even whenever the council does anything at the book, uh, back, book pack, backpack giveaway. I was out there because children were present. So this administration will always be present uh and aware and alert. But um there, it, we are free to change the timing, the dates. Uh, as of right now, it is just on our planning calendar. Uh, we have not sent out our postcards yet. We can edit them. Uh, if the, if the timing is something that you would like to have changed, but the idea would be. That at the time that the parents are celebrating the Christmas party upstairs in the gold room. That parents that have children can bring their children and we would celebrate in a nutrition center. So they would not be there in isolation of their parents. Uh, whatever this administration does with children, it is the expect that we would have the parents present. Uh, so we are not a daycare, so we are not looking to do events where parents drop kids off and leave. So uh whatever event that we do with children, the expect is that it's an opportunity for parents and children alike. To have an experience with our city.
Um, I, 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 and I actually do have a problem with parents upstairs, kids downstairs, cuz they did that one time before, and a lot of the parents didn't stay down there with them kids. And um I think if you're gonna do this, it need to be a separate event altogether where the parents are there doing the whole thing. Um, you know, I'm, I, that's just my feeling. Like I said, and I'm not throwing a baby out with the bathwater, but that situation, even though we didn't, had absolutely nothing to do with it. And we took every precaution that we possibly could, it almost broke this city. What they were suing us for was such an astronomical amount that it was over and above. The maximum amount that our insurance would cover, and we would have to come out of our pocket with the difference. And I just don't want us to be opened up to any type of situation like that again, and I'm, I'm very, 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 very cautious when it comes down to the children. You know, and I'm not saying you're gonna do anything. I know you are too, and, and, and all of us probably are, but you never know who you're dealing with, you know, and you just gotta be very vigilant. You know, in a situation and, and now insurance carrier and our attorney said the same thing, you know, that's why we installed cameras all over the building and we, and we took a lot of other precautions. To make sure it wouldn't happen again and to make sure that we were covered. Um. Um, let me, uh, another thing I wanna ask you about is, um. You said last week at the work session that I got the ballots for, somebody asked you, do I get the ballots, and you said yes. Why would you say that when I didn't get the ballots?
I'm sorry, I don't recall saying that.
Yes, you typed it, you typed it in the chat. You gonna pull up that chat and somebody said, did, Councilman Herring, did you get the ballots? And you answered yes, and I'm like. No, I did not get the ballots, you know, and I don't understand why you would.
That must have been relative to another thing. Uh, I did not say that the, the relative. Uh, the, 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 the information surrounding is, has Councilman Herring been given the ballots? The answer to that is not on the administration. Uh, this is now pushed by the Board of Election to the attorney. So the Board of Elections has advised you, Councilman Herring, that if you would like to have the ballots, they would require a court order. To get the ballots. Now, when it goes from that position, uh, the administration has leveraged the Board of Election. As well leveraged our attorney uh on your behalf to afford you the opportunity to have these ballots. But in the charter, the final word on whether or not you get them does not rest with this administration. In fact. It rests with the council and the Board of Elections. So the Board of Elections has been leveraged. And the next alternative unfortunately is uh the circuit court. And that's what the Board of Election has informed you uh in their letter that they wrote, not only to you, sir. But the council, this administration and the attorney, that that's their requirement.
Let me, let me say, Ms. Cross, you were in the same meeting that I was in with the attorney. And it is on you as the administration. I submitted my request to the administration in accordance to our rules uh under the Maryland Public Information Act. And the attorney was quite clear with what he said. It's on you. All you need is somebody from the election board to witness you and your staff making copies. That's it. That, the, the election board has no more say in it. Mr. Montgomery does not own the ballots. Mr. Montgomery has no more say in it. Our charter is, does not address the ballots. We fall under the Maryland Public Information Act.
Well, point of order, Mr. uh, Councilman Herring, uh, if you can refrain from using Mr. Montgomery's name, just say Board of Elections, that'd be great. Thank you.
She, um, the mayor used his name, the chair of the, of the, of the election board. She said, he said, she said he sent me a letter, so.
My apologies for both the mayor and Councilman Herring. If, just please refer to the Board of Elections, so we won't get into a back and forth.
Mr. President, he is a public official, right, as of this moment. He is the chair of the Board of Elections. He can be referenced at, at any time. I'm not gonna go and, go back and forth with it, but as, just so you know, as a, elected, as a, as a public official. Appointed by this government, he can be referenced at any time, in any manner and any way. I don't, I'm not, I don't have time to worry about his delicate sensibilities. Cuz he don't wanna, he, he's gonna get all up in a hissy. I'm not, I'm not worrying about that. He's a public official. Don't like to address me and say all these things to me as an elected official. I take it. Cuz that's what I, that's all I'm in a position to do. He's in a public, public position also, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on, but I'm just saying, Mayor. Uh, the, 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 it's on you as the mayor and as the administration to give me a copy of those ballots that was told to us, that is on you. And is, and, and the election board has no more say in this. So I'm just saying, I, I'm asking to get those ballots. Because if I do, I'm, I'm really trying not to get, have my hands forced. I really don't wanna have to force, cuz when I, when it does get forced, I'm taking it to the fullest degree that I have to. You know, and I'm gonna put down not only your name, but also Mr. Montgomery's name as the people that I'm gonna have to take to court. And I'm not, and I'm putting a hold election, what I'm taking, and, and I don't wanna do that. I want you to just give me what I'm entitled to under the Maryland Public Information Act, and attorney has already made that quite clear. So I'm just asking you to do, do, do what you took an oath to do and uphold the constitution of the state of Maryland. Um. One other thing, I saw your endorsement to, uh, today of Peter Fransho on YouTube. I wanted to ask that you do one thing for me. You can endorse whoever you wanna endorse, but you said that the city of Glendale is behind Peter Fransho. I have, I, as a, as a, as an elected official, has not endorsed any candidate for governor or any other position. So please keep your endorsements to yourself. Uh, you know, you just said, you free to say I'm endorsing him, you know, Mayor. You know, Casino Cross is endorsing him, not the city of Glendale, cuz every citizen is not endorsing uh, 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 Peter Fransho. I don't know what the citizen, who, what, who the citizens are endorsing. I know I'm not endorsing anybody just as, as of yet. No one has asked me to endorse him, so I'd just like to ask you to, just when you do your endorsements and you do your little. You know, your little support of, of Mr. Fransho, could you leave it to you and not the city of Glendale? Cuz when you say the city, you, you're assuming that all council members are also endorsing this candidate, and I haven't endorsed any candidate for governor or any other position. So I'm just asking that, asking that as a favor to me as a councilman who wants some, wants the citizens to know who I'm gonna support. And when I'm ready to support somebody, I would let them know myself personally who I'm gonna support. So I'm, I'm just asking that of.
Hmm, thank you for that, Councilman Herring, and, and for that reason, I did not wear any uh city paraphernalia. And I actually said that you have my support. Uh, but I, I do take knowledge and I'm very sensitive to uh my position in this city. But as a voter, I do have my rights to do uh as well as far as uh whatever support I would like to offer. But I do acknowledge your, your concern and as a result, uh, you did not see me. Uh, in mask or have any City of Glen Arden paraphernalia on uh as well. I, I do wanna acknowledge that for any citizen, based on the uh Board of Elections' ballot requests. Uh, for any citizens that would like to have a copy of the response from the Board of Election on their position. Uh, I am happy to release that information, uh, as this is a public meeting. I don't foresee that there would be uh any issues with releasing that to any citizen that would like to have it. Uh, Mr. Herring, uh, as I was Councilman Herring, uh, the Board of Elections um have basically requested. That any labor costs uh for the ten board members who have and will be. Uh, sorting the ballots and redacting the barcodes and making copies for you uh be adequately compensated. Uh, the board members are to be compensated for their loss of salary, cuz they will have to take off time from their place of employment. Uh, the Board of, of Elections uh are available uh during the week uh as well. So weekends may be an option, but will also be subject to their availability. Uh, at this time, um, Councilman Herring, um, I believe that's the Board of Elections' support. To give you the ballots. Uh, they just have those requests, so whenever you would like. Uh, to just, they will have to just set a time and get it done for you.
Um, Mayor, let me just tell you something so that you can, will you please read the Maryland Public Information Act? Our law clearly states how much it costs to produce. It's twenty-five cent per page. That's it. That's what's reasonable. That's what the, the law requires. Law does not require the board to do what they're doing. What they're doing now is against the law, trying to stack the deck so you can't afford to get them. That's completely against the law. And I do not have to pay for no ten board members to go to the Xerox machine and make copies. They should not be, I don't want not one thing redacted on those ballots. Those ballots are anonymous. I got them information from the um elect tech that says every ballot is anonymous. There's no identifying information on those ballots. I don't want not one thing marked on those ballots when I get a copy of them, and I'm not paying ten board members to take off their job and sit up there and eat lunch on my dime. I'm gonna go by what the, what the law says, which is twenty-five cent per page, and that's what I'm ready to do. And if I wanna take it to that level. Where you wanna violate the law and clearly show that you're trying not to give me the ballots by trying to price me out. Now, I'll pay it, but I'm gonna take it to court and I'm gonna sue this administration in that election board. So I'm telling you, you need to talk to the attorney, get clarification from him, because this is gonna go down the road that you're not gonna like, and I'm gonna win this. When it goes to the Attorney General's office, I'm gonna win it, because I'm entitled to it. And so I, my thing is, you need to do what you need to do, that the oath that you took under the, under, uh, that night. That you're gonna honor the constitution of the state of Maryland, you need to honor that constitution and, and, and give me those ballots like you are required to do under Maryland law. So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, so all of that mess that Mr. Montgomery put in that email about paying this and paying that, I'm not paying him one real cent. I'm going by what the law says. And the law says twenty-five cent per page. That's what our law says.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, thank.
I, 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 I'm done, cuz I'm going down. Oh, no, one other thing. We have our financial reports for, for, we have a financial report for July and August.
Yes.
I haven't seen those.
We'll make sure that they are turned to you, sir. We'll get them out to you.
To, to the entire council, please.
We will, no problem. And I'm also emailing Attorney Kropinski, uh, because he was copied on this Board of Election response. Uh, for his response as well, and you said, uh, I'll put the percentage thirty-four cents per page.
Twenty-five cent per page.
Thirty-five cents per.
Twenty-five, twenty-five cent per page.
Copy, twenty-five cents per page and no uh payments to the Board of Elections.
That Board of Elections, those, that Board of Elections got more money than any other Board of Elections we ever had, those three people, so no, not paying them any more money.
I'm sending it right now.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gillian.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to clarify before, I had some questions but, or comments, but just wanna clarify that the mayor at one point did say that. Um, as far as the ballots were concerned, that council had to, had something to do with the approval of the ballots being copied. And given to Councilman Herring and per the attorney, uh, because during our work, our closed session with the attorney. I asked that question just to make sure and the, the attorney said no, they had nothing to do with the council. So Councilman Herring was right at not mentioning council, but it's out of the council's hands. Just wanna make sure that all the citizens who are on this call. Um, the legislative body has nothing to do with that. Um, I want to also mention um this to the mayor, um, mayor, you mentioned you're working with Glen Arden Housing Authority. So just wanted to give you some um little bit of tidbit that I served on the housing authority for a few years. And they're going to be in need of um someone to be appointed to the housing authority, so just wanted to give you that as an F Y I. So um if you need more details or information, you can ask me and I can talk to you off record about that, but just wanted you to know, just in case.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilwoman. Um, we, we actually did get a recommendation uh for a new board member. Uh, from the housing authority, uh, and we'll meet with Ms. Lane uh to review that board member's submission, so we actually have a resume.
Thank you. Um, I, one of the things that Councilman Herring mentioned, I, I don't want to beat it to a pulp, but the finance reports, we're interested. In the finance report, so if you can, please just provide that to us. I'll be very. in the finance reports, so if you can, please, just provide that to us, I'll be very, very appreciative. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to mention was, I know council, um, council president on our behalf, um, well, at least on several of our behalf, men, um, sent an email to you a few days ago, regarding the sandwich boards. I know that a little over a month ago, um, former councilwoman and mayor, um, Carter, I believe, had mentioned, um, the need for us to have sandwich boards, and you stated, you know, during the meeting that you were working on that, and we recently, um, saw sandwich boards go up that were not, um, basically, um, representing Glen Arden in the right way. Um, so wanted to know if you could, since we didn't hear from you, if you could just provide us with, um, an update on that, if possible.
So I did reply on that, and I'll just recount what I said, uh, restate what I said. Um, so our sandwich boards have been ordered. Uh, we did run into some ordering delays. Our supervisor, I had, um, to go out on workman's comp, uh, which did delay the processing of that request. Uh, but the boards have been ordered. Um, the boards that went up are, were not an acceptable, it was not acceptable. Uh, and for that, the administration does offer us some serious apologies, uh, particularly, we do not take kindly to misspelled words. But what I will say, uh, is the supervisor was on leave and out of office, and that task was handed off to, uh, members of Public Works to handle. Uh, and while I'm sure they put their best foot forward, uh, it did fall short of excellence. But we have ordered the appropriate signage and in, and expecting it in shortly. But, uh, I just wanted to make sure, you do have an email on that council president. Uh, and now, council, you all informed, uh, that the process is moving forward. Uh, but we did run into some ordering snacks, and we had our supervisor out on workman's comp. But now that he's back, uh, we'll get the information updated and make sure, uh, that it's in place uh, as soon as possible.
Thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to, can you hear me? Can you all hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, um, thank you for that, and I, I, this is something that council man Herring briefly mentioned, which was, you know, the council as a whole is trying to work together. Um, and so I'm pleased at how things have been going thus far. And the point that I'm making with that is, for the, for, um, for the future, that goes for the mayor and for council who are on this call. If there's an email that goes out, that comes with everyone on that email, it would be helpful when the response is given, that everybody who is on that email sees it, because I never saw a response, and if I had known, I wouldn't have said it, said anything, so, just wanna say that. Thank you.
Uh, and, and across to that point, the, the same sandwich board that was up last week with incorrect spelled words was put up again this week for Thursday. It's at the corner, it's when you exit the Woodmore, um, development on Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, so it's still up there. Uh, uh, Councilman Free.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just had a couple of points, uh, same thing about the finance report. Um, the format in particular, um, I'm hoping that we can go back to the more comprehensive format, where it really lists out a year-to-date for each of the line items. Um, so the citizens can have a, a good view of where we are. Um, you know, what that run rate is. So, um, hopefully we can turn to that format and get those reports out for next month. Then in terms of, um, events, um, as Councilwoman Gilliam said, it is, uh, our hope and endeavor that we can coordinate and, um, support as many events as possible. Um, that does become a challenge when we are not notified of events in advance. Um, just during this conversation, uh, in hearing Councilman Herring speak about the Polar Express, um, I went on the website and saw that was there, and also see that there's uh, an event for Thanksgiving, giving turkeys away. Um, so if the administration has events that are being planned, it would be helpful to have that information ahead of it being communicated, probably, one. Um, that helps us be able to prepare and support the, uh, administration in our presence at the events, but also when citizens reach out to us about these event, events, and we're not aware of them, it's, it, it looks like there's confusion when there doesn't need to be. Um, a kind of simple, uh, coordination of activities. Um, again, not saying permission, but just understanding what's planned, um, so that we can all coordinate and, and work together, that would be greatly, uh, appreciated. And then, um, lastly, uh, any updates on the website? Um, the new website, um, some things that I see on the website now, the organization of them, I, I believe that the challenges that we have with the website will be remedied with the new website. Um, but there was also something specific on the website that I noticed, uh, in the section that talks about the American Rescue Plan Act. When you click on it, the information there is actually for Cottage City, not for the city of Glen Arden, so I think we need to, the website is really busy right now, and I, I think that might be part of the challenge, but the other thing is, we need to make sure that the information that's relevant to Glen Arden specifically is, is, uh, front and center, and then any information for the county or the state or other cities potentially, um, is kind of secondary to that. So those are all the points I had. Thank you.
Councilman Free, Councilman Ha, Councilman Hairston.
Um, I've seen some citizen hands up before mine, I don't know if you wanted to let them comment first, or you just wanted to let me go?
I was gonna let you go, cause we haven't gotten to that portion yet, um, cause once I get to citizens' comments, now just have it open for the citizens.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna just be short and sweet, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm just wanted to respond on the ballots, I just wanted to ask that, we just do what we need to do to just get it done, cause I'm, I'm kind of shy, I'm tired of hearing about it, we've been hearing about it for a long time. And I think that, you know, everybody should just make sure that we just get this resolved, and let's get this done, and stop prolonging it out, so we can move forward and, you know, handle city businesses as well, as we need to, cause this been dragged out way too long, like, let's just fix it and just get it done and keep it moving. That's all I ask, that's all I really gotta say. And I don't see how anybody comfortable with it constantly being dragged out and be presented at different meetings and different meetings, like, let's just get it finished. And that's all.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilman Hairston. Sorry, we can drink some water. Councilwoman, uh, Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Um, to, uh, Mr. Herring's, um, concern about the, uh, MLK site. Mr. Herring, if I'm not mistaken, we signed a resolution also to have that, uh, facility taken down, uh, the, the prior council, so that resolution would still be in effect to have that, uh, taken down. I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, also, on another subject, I've seen some, um, requests from citizens concerning some of the, 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 uh, trees that are, that have been planted, that are now grown up over the stop signs at Johnson and Glen Arden Parkway. And I think the citizen mentioned, uh, another citizen mentioned, when they go out, uh, seven oh, to seven oh four at Johnson Avenue and seven oh four, those bushes are kind of hindering you from seeing the traffic. And at seven oh four and, uh, Glen Arden Parkway, the trees are, are also a hindrance, and the flag that the, uh, tobacco shop has put up is causing a hindrance for citizens to see, uh, coming out of those, those areas, so. Um, that might be something that we need to get Public Works, uh, to look at in addressing those issues that we don't have, uh, folks, um, not being able to see, uh, coming out of those, uh, intersections, and the stop signs being, um, hindered. Okay, uh, okay. All right, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Council President. If I may, uh, if, if the council clerk could provide the administration with the resolution for demolition, which Councilwoman Jones just mentioned, uh, that'd be greatly appreciated. That's a, a, a very helpful, um, comment. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Council President.
Councilwoman Jones.
Also with that, and, and also, that, that Mr., Mr., um, that Councilman Herring mentioned that if we don't spend that money by, I think it's June of twenty twenty-two, we have to have that money spent by that time in order to, uh, satisfy that grant, so that's, that's, this is why this is of the, uh, of an urgency to get things done. And I will offer my services. I am off during the day. If Jerry, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, needs assistance and getting this done, I will, um, offer my assistance and going to, going with him to depile, or whatever it is that he has to do, to get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, and, um, clerk, could you please work with Councilwoman Jones to, to research that specific legislation and provide it to the, uh, mayor's office?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson.
I, I have the, um, the resolution, I can send it. I think I sent it to you, Mr. Herring, uh, last week.
Yes, thank you. Oh, thank you, I do go forward to, um, um, Miss Lewis, that'd be great. Thank you for reminding me about that. Councilman Free, is your hand still up from the last one?
Well, kinda is, I, I did, I didn't get a response back on, um, you know, in terms of the events in the planning calendar for events going forward.
Oh, thank you so much. So the administration is, uh, putting these events out. Uh, in fact, this notification uh, is one way that we're utilizing, but we're also, um, putting together our flyers. We can send those out to uh, the, uh, the council as well. Uh, you know, we, as a whole, the communication strategy within, uh, the administration and the council, uh, I know we're all working hard to make sure that everyone's looped in to everything that everybody's got going on. Like, um, again, even though the police are here, the Trumpet Treat is the news to me tonight. But we are all gonna work forward, uh, and make sure that our citizens are aware, which is why we want to do this quarterly, uh, calendar. Uh, and this quarterly calendar is not for the administration exclusively. We would hope that, uh, the council and the police and anyone who uh, is planning to do events will support putting those events on the quarterly calendar, which then would go out to our citizens. Uh, if we, I believe that we are doing pretty good with sharing information. Uh, I do know that we can plus up that sharing on both houses, uh, both the council and the administration, uh, going forward. But I do want to make sure that, um, everybody's aware that this calendar uh, could be the result of positive actions for our citizens, because after all, these events are not being planned for us, but they are planned for the enjoyment of our city and our citizens, so, uh, please, uh, if the council has events, I would like to, uh, add to the calendar, please send me, uh, C, C Cross at cityofglenarden.org, as well as M Ward, Monae Ward, cityofglenarden.org, uh, and then we can set up, uh, calendar review meetings. Uh, so the administration is not opposed to doing that. I do know that our schedules are all kind of, uh, uh, very divergent, but I'll let you know that the administration is in. Uh, as a mayor, I'm in traditionally from three to five every day. Um, I do have an office phone as well as a personal cell phone and email, uh, be happy to coordinate.
Okay, sorry, Council President, thank you for that, but I, I, I think that's missing the spirit of what my comment was about. It's about us coordinating and putting together, not kind of receiving the flyers as well. Um, there have been a number of events that the council has found about, found out about after they've already been communicated, and, you know, that's the, the gala. Um, and now talking about the Polar Express, you know, these events are already in flight when we are notified about them, and that's in general not a problem, but when we're gonna be asked to not have events so that we can make space for other events, that's where the challenge comes in. Um, I don't recall seeing numerous emails about a Christmas party. I saw an email today asking about whether we were having one, so I don't know if there are other communications, you know, going out that maybe the whole council is not seeing, but I think the point is, the spirit should be, when there's an event that we want to have as a cohesive government, both the administration and the legislative branch, that we should be sitting down and coordinating that to make sure that all persons are available, and so that we can all fully support the activity and really get behind it and encouraging, you know, the people that we know to come to that event. So that's really what it is, not about getting a calendar that's published, or how that calendar is gonna be communicated to the citizens, but more collaborating so that we can have a more unified approach in, uh, coordinating events.
I know, I agree with that. I mean, like, take this, you know, the backpack drive, the administration found out by the first time we got was the advertisement, um, but we showed up and we supported, uh,
Sorry, let me just.
Expendment fair, now the expenditure fair, we actually found out from the state's attorney's office, who called and said, we're gonna be in your area. So, but, uh, going forward, we're gonna work hard to make sure that everybody's looked in, and, um, and, and we'll go forward.
So this one, on the backpack fair, that was in planning before you were the mayor, and as, as soon as you were declared the mayor, that communication was sent out to, um, Ms. Lewis at the time, who was the executive clerk, to make sure that you could participate in that event. So I, you know, that, that was a difference in timing, but I think, again, the point is that if we want support, um, even if an event has already been planned or in the works, you know, a direct kind of reaching out to uh, coordinate efforts and, and support of the event would be, you know, helpful there too.
I think we should do that on both houses, but, um, it is acknowledged, um, that, that communication uh, as a team needs to happen.
Thank you, Councilman Free and, and Ray Cross. Are there any other comments from the council before I move on to citizens' comments? And since this, I know this is, um, getting kind of late, but, yeah, I'll open it up to, to you, and we'll, uh, limit you to, uh, um, five minutes. And we will make sure that next week's meetings, that it will be dedicated to citizens, uh, where you will be prioritized to have your comments, uh, before the council, you know, um, uh, jumps in, um, to make comments about different things, so. With that being said, uh, Ms. Wilson, I saw your hand first.
I'm sorry, Miss Smallwood had a, a blue hat there, hand up first.
I, I understand, um, so I'm, I'm trying to get everybody, uh, uh, one, the hand was up the whole meeting, so it never came down. Uh, so I just assumed there's been up the whole time, but I will get back to Miss Smallwood, cause she already had a chance to talk. So I wanted to get to people who hadn't had a chance to speak yet, and then I'm going to move back around to Miss Smallwood to see if she had her hand, won her hand up a second time, uh, cause it never came down from, uh, the original.
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to be polite, and, and if you would ask her if she had something else to say. Before I had what I have to say.
Miss Wilson, uh, uh, you know what? I will do it. Uh, Miss Smallwood.
Yes.
Your hand up from last time, or?
No. My hand came down, and soon as, as soon as the comments, soon some comments came up, I put my hand up, cause I got some comments.
My apologies, I didn't see it go down. I, I only saw it stay up, so, uh, you have the floor, um, and you have, sorry, five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, my question is to you. Uh, you had been here, citizens' comments, which mean it's supposed to be for the citizens, but you let the council take up the citizens' comment time. Now, normally, citizens' comments is for citizens, not for council. Council is not supposed to take this time to have the type of discussion they just had. So I would appreciate it if citizens' comments time come, let the citizens speak, and then what this council just went through, they could do that in the work section. Now, I am totally in agreement with everything that Councilman Herring said about the MLK Park, uh, the pajama, PJs, pajama bananas, whatever. the pajama, PJs, pajama bananas, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, I do do not think that is the proper place to have those, those kids. If you wanna have something for the kids, have it as another day, another time or whatever, but do not, it should not be downstairs in that council room, in the, in the, um, council chamber. Also, Mrs., um, Council, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Cross stated that, uh, the building hasn't been like that and just in two years. So for Ms. Cross, we've been working on that building.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Smallwood, you're on mute.
I came in board. I came on board in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twelve under the leadership of, um, Peter Jones. He got us phase one grant money for two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That's all that beautiful equipment that you saw on family, friends, Glenn, I, whatever they had over there in the park. Okay, so we have been working on that project. We only can get one open space project at a time. You have to, you have to complete that project before you start on another project. Glenn Arden, yes, they are slow in moving and getting things done, but we got it done. The next phase two came in, in two thousand and seventeen, under the leadership of Mr. Tobias. We have been trying to move this face of this project done ever since Mr. Tobias brought it in, but we've been having confusion, confusion, confusion behind Lawrence Winston, who is not a historian for the city of Glenn Arden. He is telling people that this building is a historic site. It is not. The Historical Society, in two thousand and thirteen, the meeting that him, Ms. Butler and I attend distinctly told him that there is nothing in Glenn Arden that is historic. So I don't know why I wanna continue to listen to Mr. Wilson, Winston about this, this madness. He is wrong. Also, I think I understood Ms., uh, Mrs. Cross to say that Mr. Stewart is now the permanent treasurer. Did I hear that correctly?
No, no, ma'am, you did not hear that correctly.
So what is, uh, so he's not the permanent?
No, no, he is not.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring to the floor is that, uh, uh, for deep I, uh, you don't need to have the city manager's name down on that paperwork, uh, to get a permit. So this project need to move forward. Ms. Cross need to do what she need to do, and she need to respect the citizens of Glenn Arden. Now, last two years ago, uh, the Civil Association went to the council, a petition with twenty-five signatures on it to keep that building up. And that one of those citizens lived in Ward One. So who are they gonna listen to? Are they gonna listen to Ward One citizens, or they're gonna listen to somebody that lives in Ward Two? You cannot keep disrespecting the citizens of Ward One because one person in Ward Two want, want to do what he want to do.
Thank you, Council. Uh, thank you, Ms. Smallwood. Your time is now, uh, up.
I'm finished.
Appreciate your, your comment. Ms. Wilson, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Good evening. Uh, my co- my comments have to do with, uh, the MLK building as well. And I agree with Mr. Herring, Ms. Smallwood, that it's a, it is a disrespect to the citizens who have said, who are, especially those who are in the impact area, to say that, that you're going to um, put a hole on that and, and we could possibly lose that money. I think that's very disrespectful to the citizens. So it, it's a matter of, uh, the, the mayor is supposedly the mayor of the whole city, not just the mayor for certain people. So if the citizens over here don't want that building up anymore, which is an eyesore, and it's a, it's a, a safety issue, then it should be taken down and she shouldn't, uh, stand in the way of having it taken down. I agree that it should not be any reason why, uh, the code enforcement officer cannot handle that. That's his job. He's code enforcement. He is, that is not a, uh, um, what did she call it? I can't think of the word now, but she was indicating that it was something, something that he couldn't do. He needs to do that. Uh, also, I agree with, uh, Mr. Herring uh, concerning the, the, um, Polar Express pajama party. And I'm asking that the council and the mayor, please don't put the city in jeopardy. We've been in jeopardy before. We do not need to be in that position again. Please think, please. We have to think about the good of the city and not just the kids. Yes, we have children. I have children. But we have to think about what is best for the city as a whole. Uh, and I want to comment on the marquee. The marquee is not readable. When you, we, uh, I don't know what it has to do with color blindness or whatever. All I know is it's not readable, and I'm asking that it be corrected so that the citizens who are sitting at the light can see what's going on. They can read it. Um, and also, um, it was mentioned by the mayor, she did say that Mr. Stewart was the treasurer. No, she did not say that he was the permanent treasurer, but she said that he was the treasurer, which would indicate, which would give the impression that he is permanent. And it's my understanding that he's temporary, and I agree that he should not have a credit card in his name. Again, you're putting the city in jeopardy, in a bad position. Um, I want to speak about the, the public hearing. I'm asking that the council bring back the public hearings so that citizens will know what's going on. We should not be able to only read, uh, a resolution or any kind of legislation on the night that it's going to be voted on. You're going against the law. It was put in place. The citizens ask that they be able to know what legislation is gonna come forth, that they be able to speak on it. And so, again, to just say that it's the, you, we just can say something on it the night before, just before you vote on it, that's not right. So I'm asking that we put that practice back in place. I, I understand, Mr. Curtis, what you said about, well, it's a public hearing. I understand, that's, that's your interpretation. I would like for it to go back the way that it was. If you wanna do tweaks on it, then fine, but at least put it in place, put it back in place. My last thing that I wanna speak about is the cable. I'm still waiting for the cable to be put, uh, for the meetings to be put on the cable. They're not there. I would like for, for, just like we have live meetings on Zoom, I would like for there to be live meetings on the cable station so that our seniors who cannot do Zoom will be able to watch those meetings. And, uh, I believe that it is assumed, which, which is bad. It is assumed that everybody it can do Zoom and you can't. So those persons who do Zoom, there, those are the people who are being catered to. They're the people who, who you all and the mayor are listening to. You're not listening to everybody else. And you don't give everybody an opportunity. Thank you very much, Mr. Curtis, that I'm able to, to, uh, make the comments. And I'm asking truly that the council will take into consideration what, uh, the citizens are saying, not just one little group. You're muted. You're muted.
Say, yes, ma'am, thank you for your comments. Uh, we will definitely work on the cable station. Uh, and, you know, I know you and I talk offline. Any way we could advertise things a little bit better, we, we will. Um, the, the resolution for tonight was advertised on the website. Um, but if we could do better, we're, we're open to, um, listening to that and doing it as well.
Mr. Curtis, just one comment. For, in order for you to do website, uh, there are seniors, there are some seniors who eighty some years old, and they don't do the website, okay?
Okay.
That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, and let's connect later to see how we can advertise to seniors who do not have access to the website. Uh, interested to hear your thoughts, uh, Ms.
Fix that cable.
Okay.
Oh, Councilman Curtis, if I may, on the.
So, Mayor Cross.
No order, front of order.
For time's sake, I'm just gonna move on to, um, uh, Mr. Jeffy Huff Jr. Oh. United Councilman, so I was about to call you council. Mr. Huff Jr., you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanna, uh, thank you guys for your support for friends and family of Glenn Arden Hallmore Day. It's very appreciated, those who support it. It's appreciated. I thank the police department, thank code enforcement. Uh, my, I got a couple of questions. So about the website, I feel like the website is too busy. Like, it's too much going on. I think the website can be organized a little bit more. And then I just earlier, I heard that talking about the, uh, trunk or treat. And the many years that the police department have been doing it, it's, it's never been a problem. You know, it was, it's always been two events. That's never been a problem. So I'm, I'm not getting, why would it be a problem this year? And then, uh, another issue like, uh, Ms. Jones had said about the trees, but that issue is going into Ward Two Two to the library, especially on Glen Arden Parkway and Reed Street. About two days ago, uh, my friend that's in a wheelchair, he was coming down. And I guess a bus was coming up, but the bus seen him at the last minute, but it could have been a real bad accident. And I'm just thinking like, if we can possibly go from all the trees on Glen Arden Parkway from wall one, two, three, just to see, cut them, trim them, and if possible, we can make a four-way stop sign right there at Glen Arden Parkway and Reed Street. And then, uh, another thing, when are y'all gonna start, uh, fixing the sidewalks to make them wheelchair accessible? So that way the wheelchair people, residents that we have, won't have to be in the street. And then another concern I got is with the ballots, because I'm getting a little confused and I'm getting a little, my mind going a little crazy. And it's making me think that's, that, that something is being hide, hidden. If it, if, if, if it's such a problem, why is it such a problem with giving Mr. Herring the ballot? I'm not understanding that. It's, if you've been approved to get them, give them to them. You get what I'm saying? It's making me feel that it's something that somebody trying to hassle, maybe somebody did something not right. But I just don't understand that. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Huff Jr. Um, Mr. Richard O'Royall Montgomery.
So, good evening, council, and thank you, Council President. Good evening, citizens. Um, I had no intentions on speaking this evening, but I feel that there are certain matters that need to be addressed um, as it relates to the ballots. Um, there, we are not hiding anything. We have, we want protocol to be followed, plain and simple. Follow protocols will deliver ballots, plain and simple. Um, I wanna say that the board, the Board of Elections is an independent board appointed by the city council. Um, we are not governed by the administration, nor are we governed by the city council. The BOE consists of ten board members, whose majority vote determines any decisions made by the BOE. The BOE chair and vice chair do not make decisions for the BOE. The chair and vice chair speak on behalf of the ten citizens who make up the board. A decision on the ballot, a, a, a decision on the request for the ballots has been made and submitted to all parties, including the requester and the city attorney. This was done in, in, in regards to, uh, full transparency. Any holdup on this request is now on the Requester. Lastly, I just wanna, I would, I just wanna state for the record that I received a private DM in the Zoom chat from Mr. Herring, in which he stated that if he has to take this, this, this action to court, he will and will only name me, not the Board of Elections. This would be a consider, this would be considered a personal attack on me. And I ask that the city council and administration address and handle this accordingly. That is all I have to say on this matter, and I will not, I will no longer address the issue of ballots at any upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royall Montgomery. Um, Mr., I'm sorry, uh, Miss.
Crutchfield, Crutchfield.
Crunchfield, thank you. It's, it's cut off, sorry.
Okay, it's Ms. Crutchfield. Ms., um, Councilman Herring, um, you spoke, you took up a lot of citizen time this evening on those ballots, and I'm, I'm just really concerned about that. What's your purpose? So my question is, what's your purpose behind receiving the ballots? What you, let's state it on the record. What are you planning on doing once you get the ballots? I, I'm just curious. So can you, if you possibly not tonight at some point, can you address that issue? I'm just concerned. You, you are adamant about getting them. You have a right, but what's your purpose behind it?
Mr. President, if he allows me to answer, I'll answer. Other than that, I'll have to answer it another time.
Councilman Herring.
What is my issue? Cause I want them. And that's my right under, as a citizen of Maryland, cause I want them. That's all I need. That's all I need.
Now, can I, I'm gonna finish. Now, once you, once you receive the ballots, you're getting the citizen ballot, our ballots. And I'm just curious, because it's my ballot, as many others, you want to have them, and what are you going to do with them? That's, you still didn't answer the question, but I'm done. That's it. I just put it out there on the record. Have a good evening.
All right, you too.
Okay, um, are there any other questions? Mr. Huff Jr., you said that anyone answered my questions. What question did you have?
About, uh, possibly making, uh, Glen Autumn Parkway and Reed Street a four-way stop, a stop street and any updates on the plan for the, making the sidewalks wheelchair accessible.
Mayor Cross, is there anything in the works on that?
Yes, there is. Uh, well, this is the first, and I've taken a note for the Parkway and Reed Street four-way accessible. Uh, Mr. Huff will look into that, but there is, uh, plans for, uh, the sidewalks uh, and getting them taken care of. Uh, in fact, uh, we can do that under the expanded highway user funds, which is just past, uh, Annapolis, the House and Senate, uh, as a bill. So we will have an opportunity to get after that as soon as possible, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other citizens' comments? Okay, uh, Montgomery, I know you didn't use up your time, but your hand is still up. Is it up from the last time?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It is. Um, I'm, I'm just in chat right now addressing some of Mr. Herring's further comments.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Jones, I saw your hand. Is it?
I just wanted to address the ADA compliant sidewalks. The engineer, Charles P. Johnson, that the city, uh, that the, uh, the city bought on to do engineering, those plans are still. We still have a copy of those plans to do those sidewalks, and it is in the budget, uh, for the last two years, uh, two, two years, two, uh, monies to do the, uh, from what they looked at. Uh, and how they priced it out, the money's in the budget to do those ADA compliant sidewalks. All we need to do is just get the, get a vendor, uh, and. All we need to do is just get the, get a vendor, uh, and, and get started. And I can bring those, I'll share those plans with everyone also.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. All right, well, it is now ten oh two. Uh, next week we will have our, um, uh, public meeting, special regular meeting. Same thing, uh, where we will prioritize citizens' comments. So please come with your comments, come with your concerns and your questions. Uh, and we will be here to, to answer them. Uh, if all hearts and minds are clear, um, it is now ten oh two and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you guys for attending.
Good night. Ain't nobody gonna say good night. Y'all just gonna roll out like that.
Good night.
Happy trip.
My grandsons and grandma, please. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Come on, I wanna read the chat. You know the dog's name is Blue, right? The dog's name is Blue. I don't know why she put on there Blue. I should have known that. Ms. Smallwood, she put on there her name was Blue. The dog's name is Blue. And old, old, old Miss, and, and Westlake kept calling her Mrs. Cross. And he got on, her man was standing by her tonight. It's Mayor Cross, not Mrs. I said, Lord, heaven, I said. He sure did. And I tried to help him. And like I said. Now, if she had have read the budget, she would have seen in the budget that the police department has a community Westlake budget that they can do the stuff for the community. They have their own community service budget. Richardson sent me a text and said, it's ten thirty from four to six. Yeah. Well, why come Richardson don't know, I mean, uh, Jackson don't know that. He's up here tap dancing. Mm-hmm, cause, cause Angela told me this evening. She said she called him and she talked to him and she told him and he, she said, he kept, and she said, she kept feeling apprehension, apprehension. So she finally asked him, well, what's the problem, uh, Jackson? And he said, well, I don't want her to take my application out. And, and Angela said, he don't want her to take his, 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 his thing out for, uh, chief. Angela said, well, that's not your priority. That's not your priority. But he thinks he is. He better have it all that done lap high, falling all over, all out the chair and everything. I sent, uh, Robinson a message. I said, cause he was sitting up there eating. I said, oh, you, now you done ate up all the, all the food. Don't you be up there snoring. He said, oh, it was only a salad. Cause if you saw me laughing, smiling during the meeting, I was laughing at Robinson cause we were sitting in Texas back and forth. I sent him a picture with snoring, slob coming down the side. I don't, you be up in there snoring.